It's Monday, October the 15th, 2018. We're in the Governor's Room of the Community Center and this is the regular meeting of the St. Peter Board of Education. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. To do so, could we consider and adopt the agenda before us?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is adopted. Would you please all stand and join me as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we have any members of our audience out there that wish to speak to an agenda item when we get to it, if you fill out a card and get it to Ms. Becky when we reach that agenda item, we'd allot you time and opportunity to speak to that. The next item we have tonight is our consent agenda. By the way, this, this meeting tonight is unusual in one regard. It's the first board meeting I've ever been to where we don't actually have a scheduled action item. So we'll be moving through that portion of the agenda rather quickly. And we have not added additional information stuff just to make you stay longer. We're just operating the way we normally would. So, our consent agenda tonight, as per our habit, we'll read down through those and if we see fit, we'll get a motion to approve them all or if we need to deal with individual items, we will at that time. On tonight's consent agenda, we are approving the regular board meeting minutes of September the 17th, 2018. We are approving board study session minutes of October the 1st, 2018. We have the approval of bills, $2,075,231.59 and wire transfers of $3,019,63.7 for the month of September. Mr. Chair, all the bills are in order. Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. Personnel items. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5 hour per day Title I paraprofessional at North Elementary, effective September 18, 2018. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a Level 2 clerical receptionist at North Elementary School, effective October 1, 2018. This is a replacement position. We are accepting the resignation of a paraprofessional at Hoffman Learning Center, effective September 22, 2018. We are approving the hiring of 1.25 hour per day Media Center paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School, effective September 25, 2018. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 2.5 hour per day lunch recess supervisor at St. Peter Middle School, effective September 25, 2018. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a .5 hour per day morning supervisor at St. Peter Middle School, effective September 25, 2018. We are approving the hiring of a 5.5 hour per day health assistant at St. Peter High School, effective October 1, 2018. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5 hour per day paraprofessional at Hoffman Learning Center, effective October 2, 2018. This is a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5 hour per day special education paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School, effective October 8, 2018. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the hiring of a 6.75 hour per day special education paraprofessional at North Elementary School, effective October 15, 2018. This is a replacement position. Did she make it through one day, Mr. Dory?
She did.
Okay, good. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5 hour per day special education paraprofessional at North Elementary School, effective October 15. Oh, another one. Did they both make it?
They did.
Oh, great. This is also a replacement position. We are approving the superintendent as the school district representative to AmeriPrize Financial to sign and accept an estate gift. School board action on the final acceptance is anticipated in November. We are approving the superintendent and business manager to authorize signees on the Elizabeth Maurer, or is it Meyer?
Meyer.
Elizabeth Meyer Trust. What's this last one?
There's one new director since the September board meeting, just to approve.
Oh, 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 oh. We have a new middle school play director, Angie Schilling, as the last item. And that ends the consent agenda. Are we, a motion to approve would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. Student Spotlight. Dr. Peterson indicated that we were going to modify this plan a little bit and tonight you get to see the results of that. Who do you have with us, Ms. Dory?
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm very excited tonight to introduce you to Joey Beederman. Joey is a 4th grader at North Elementary School. He's in Mr. Lewis's class. And I was excited to share the process that we talked about last month where we were looking at student spotlight, student of the month for each building. And so I shared that out with the staff in September and asked for the staff members, the teachers, to share if they have any students that are in their homerooms that are just showing some extra passion, some extra drive, something that they're just involved in, that they're going above and beyond. And Mr. Lewis got back to me, along with a handful of other teachers, and said Joey has been doing a fabulous job during their weekly genius hour. So in Mr. Lewis's class, they spend about an hour a week just letting the kids focus on whatever their interest area is. And so they can study that, they can read about it. But the bottom line with that is they need to figure out like how to communicate that to their classmates. So they turn into the kind of the resident expert of that room. And so he pointed out to me Joey has a huge passion in falconry. And he's been working really hard to communicate, to learn more about it and to communicate those findings out to his classmates. So I'm going to let Joey explain a little bit like how he got started down that road. So, first question for you Joey is, you know, what, what got you started like learning all about falconry?
Um, I read the book My Story of the Mountain and I thought it was interesting because the boy Sam Bruley took a falcon and trained it and it got me really interested in birds and I wanted to know how you can get one.
So how long have you been studying falcons?
Um, I started studying about the end of 3rd grade and I read books on it and then you went to the spirit called the game fair and the falcon show, falcon show. And I learned a lot about falcons and hawks there.
All right, very good. And then, how do you, so now that you're an expert, like you're the classroom expert on this, so how do you plan on, actually what all the board members have that you're going to be sharing with your class?
I made this packet on Google slides. It just talks about the different trends and stages and types of birds.
And what else did you bring with you?
I brought the books that I read.
Yeah. And so basically it was this series that you got started reading and then it just, there's a falcon in there, that's one of many characters, there's supporting characters, and then you learn more about it and now you're teaching your class about it. So I know you have some plans coming up for the end of the month here. There's Halloween coming up and you were telling me today you have a plan for a costume. Why don't you tell them about your costume?
My costume is going to be Sam Bruley.
And who's that again?
The character of the story.
Great.
All right, and Joey, you brought some people with you that you have your parents with you. So right behind us are Paul and Katie Beederman. So it's, it's very exciting to have them here and have you as our first spotlight student from, from North to get the ball rolling. So thank you so much for being here today. Any questions from board members?
I have one. Have you started making your cave under the tree in the backyard yet?
No.
What about gathering acorns to make pancakes? Have you started to do?
Yes, I have.
You have done that?
They're kind of bitter, aren't they? You wash it out, it tastes.
How do you do that?
You just put them in water, change the water.
Good for you.
Just a quick one. This, this is really well done, Joey. Thank you. It's going to help me understand a little bit. And thank you for coming tonight. This is just a real honor for us to have you, as a 4th grader here with us. And good luck, just keep working.
Others?
Stick with it. Very good.
Good job.
As indicated earlier, we are looking at no action items tonight, so we're going to move, oh, wait a minute. We have our student council representative.
Yeah.
That mean he stole your thunder.
It's okay. Um, yeah, so lately what's been going on, pretty much everybody knows about homecoming, so I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. Um, it was really awesome this year. Like, me personally, I think it was the best homecoming I've ever been to and I heard that from a lot of other people too. The carnival that we planned for so long went super well. There was balloon darts and like pop ring toss and a bunch of different tournaments for spikeball and volleyball. And it just seems like so many people were involved and all the kids were having a good time. So that was really awesome. And then also the dance was a hit. I thought it went really well. There were a lot of pictures online and just everybody loved it. It was a great time. I thought the neon thing was super cool too because it gave people like a chance to dress up, but they didn't have to get all semi-formal and all that. So that was really nice. And the next thing that we're working on is a Halloween dance, which is in the making. It's not totally for sure yet. We're waiting on it tomorrow. So that's pretty much our next big thing after our little break after homecoming. So, yep, it's going to be good.
Questions?
Where are the soccer teams at? I mean, are we, are we seeing section play yet or?
We were. The girls lost on Saturday to West. It was 2-0, but the boys won Saturday morning against Albert Lee, so now they play in Worthington tomorrow night, I believe. Yep.
Okay. Others? All right, so we're going to jump down into our information items tonight. And the first thing we have is the Achievement and Integration Program. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just another update on our continued planning on the integration program that we will be joining starting July 1st. That is a program that has been offered to St. Peter through Mankato. Mankato being identified as a racial, racially segregated school district and us being adjacent to St., to Mankato, we have an opportunity to partner with Mankato and other regional schools to promote racial integration, increase student achievement, create some educational opportunity and really reduce the academic disparities that we see really across the state. St. Peter's no different when it comes to the continued achievement gap. And so we have started that planning process. ETIV, as our Special Programs Administrator, has helped at the front end in our creating a framework for how we'll be doing our data information collection over the first few months, how we will eventually be developing our plan and bringing that plan to the school board in time to have it submitted to the state this winter. So, have ETIV here to kind of just walk us through in real general terms the timeline that we've set for ourselves to make sure that we're staying on top of things.
So in your packet you have a copy of the?
No, there's no, there's nothing in the packet. We're just talking through it.
We're just talking through it. So we have an integration plan, action plan in process. And with a lot of the programs and plans we present to Minnesota Department of Ed, there's a timeline and a collection of data and those types of things. So this isn't any different than that. The, the plan is to create a community collaborative council representing lots of folks within our community and our school community as well. And then we'll conduct some needs assessments and that'll occur both through surveys of parents and staff as well as doing a walkthrough, an integration walkthrough. And so we've recruited a few folks within our area that we consider almost experts in, in those areas to go through our buildings with our principals and take a look at some of those different areas. Take a look at some of the things that we look at every day, our physical environment, is it a safe place to be? What are the behaviors? What's the culture? And then of course it, it takes us into that, that inclusive and responsive climate. So that will be part of that data collection. We'll also align this process with our World's Best Workforce Plan. We want to make sure we're doing that. Once we receive that data back and we're able to analyze, we'll develop the plan with some SMART goals and of course budgets and, and ways to measure our outcomes. And so there, those are all laid out for us by the state. We hope to actually have the plan submitted after the board has taken a look at it, provided input. The plan would be submitted to MDE in March of 2019. Any questions just about the general flow of how the, the plan will roll out as far as timeline?
We had a chance to speak with the Instructional Program Committee last week just about the, the general components and the types of things that we'll be looking at. MDE is really, really, it keeps us focused to make sure that, that the possible strategies that we may be using are really data driven. And so that's why the needs assessment and talking with parents, talking with staff members and then doing these walkthroughs is so important. And they do line up and are aligned with our strategic plan with the World's Best Workforce Goals as, as ETIV said. It's a three-year plan and so we'll be reporting back to the state on an annual basis about how we're making progress on our goals. But it is a three-year cycle. And this, this coming school year, there, there are a significant number of school districts who will be accessing the Achievement and Integration Program, which really does point to the, the continued diversity of our state. St. Peter has never been an integration district in the past and now obviously our, we're seeing new families move to St. Peter. And so this is really good timing for us as we continue to work on those achievement gap issues that have really been persistent.
Are these, I mean, we're involved in this because we border a district that is identified.
That's correct.
And there are a number of other districts that also border. Are we all following the same process and reporting on the same kind of timeline into that?
That is, that is correct. Right. And some of the districts who border Mankato have already been in an achievement partnership. For example, Lake Crystal partners with Medellin. Niklet partners with, I believe, Sibley East. Cleveland and ourselves are, are new to this, as is Janesville, Waldorf, Pemberton. So we are in the process of hooking onto the Mankato plan. We develop our own plan, but there will be certainly things that we do together across the districts, which will be an interesting, interesting to work with them in those capacities as well.
Following that process, but what's unique to St. Peter, where our strengths and limitations are and how can we, we can improve and build, yeah?
The Finance Committee will note and recall that the Achievement and Integration Program is heavily on the state aid side. There is a small component that is local levy. It's a 70-30 split and so that is currently in the works with the Finance Committee to be incorporated in next year's levy.
Some of the focus, some of the focus areas that we need to take a look at as, as they identify them as strategies would be the integrated learning environments, hosting family engagement activities, providing rigorous coursework and career and college readiness for all of our students, professional development, recruitment and retention of diverse staff, and equitable access to effective and diverse teachers. So those are the focus areas as we move through the planning process we'll be looking at.
Thank you, Ms. Pracke. Next up under information, we have the World's Best Workforce Update.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Annette is here to provide us with an overview. As, as you'll recall, this is an annual event where really there are multiple things related to World's Best all happening at once. Plan development for the current year, reflection on last year's plan, and the annual Community Advisory Committee that meets to take a look really at both. What are our plans and how did we do last year? So, and that's just going to provide an overview of those tasks.
Sure. Officially, we will be presenting the new report to you guys at next month's board meeting and, and going over at the next board study session as well. But, but we're in the planning stages for this right now, planning for the, an October 23rd World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee meeting. And that, that advisory committee is made up of, of some board members, teachers, parents, students, and administration. Last year, we also combined it with our Professional Development Advisory Committee and, and we, we plan to talk about, about some new things that chime in on this one. We met with somebody from MDE last week, Mrs. Pracke and Dr. Peterson and myself, on some ideas for discussion with that committee and in planning for next year's report. The five areas, I'm sure you all remember, are school readiness, 3rd grade literacy, closing the achievement gap, career and college readiness for all, and high school graduation. I feel like we especially got some good feedback from, from the woman from MDE on that number four, career and college readiness for all. And I'm also, I know I'm going to be thankful for the help of Mandy Quist when it comes to writing a goal and, and gathering information and input on that number four goal.
Just a quick one, Mr. Chair. I serve on the Workforce Advisory Committee. We're meeting October 23rd prior to the, what is it, Instructional Committee and then the full board. So hopefully I'll have a little bit better understanding what's in it.
This, this was also one that the Instructional Program Committee talked about last week. Scheduled an additional meeting to make sure that they had a chance to see the preliminary before it came to the full board in November. And then if approved, making sure that we get that up to MDE by December 1st.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the MDE School Safety Grant. Dr. Peterson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, just an update on information that we received from the state of Minnesota after our last school board meeting in September. As you all know, the board provided authorization for the school district to move forward with submitting school safety grants in August. The state legislature provided $25 million across the state to provide upgrades to infrastructure and security, pieces of equipment, et cetera, for, for schools that could make application. Those applications were due or they started accepting applications at the end of August. And you potentially have read in the media that virtually every school district in the state have submitted requests for individual schools or multiple schools within their districts. Believe it or not, after hundreds and hundreds of schools were in there, we actually had two of our grants receive a low enough lottery number where they were fully funded. And so North Elementary and then the Minnesota Valley Education District, both, both of those applications were pulled quite low. And so for North, there was $79,000 allocated and for MVET, $59,000. And so the plans are similar, not identical, because those are two very different buildings, but things like access and alarms and communication systems and notification systems will be in the, in the plans for now us working with MDE to get the specific requirements fulfilled for those grants, so we can start implementing those just as soon as we can. So we were very fortunate. There's already talk at the legislature, or at least amongst school folks at the legislature, that for the $225 million that wasn't funded, there needs to be some sort of additional program. That's a lot of dollars. As schools made those requests, they just could not fund all of them.
Well, Mr. Chair, you've got to remember that $255 million isn't available for anything else. I mean, I know we all have security issues and it's very important, but I think individual districts have stepped up as much as they can. But you take that kind of money out of possible school funding and made it categorical, it really can change things. It changes negotiations, it changes program offerings, it changes what students have. I mean, that's a lot of money. That's true. The old rule of thumb is for every million dollars, it's one dollar on the formula. So that's about 255 bucks that isn't going on the formula.
Yeah. And I think that's the, that is the area that people will be watching closely. It's, it's about the general aid formula as competing interests.
The other good side of that is the state is about a billion over what they thought they were going to collect. Their latest report just came out a week ago or so and it was another 300, 400 million. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it puts it just under a billion over what the forecast was. Now that can change. If you looked at the market last couple of days, it can change quickly.
So, yeah, so on a, on a related note to that, our School Security Committee is meeting again next week where they'll have an opportunity to learn a little bit more about the specifics of the grant allocation, working with Mr. Bachman, the principals, to get a timeline in place to make sure that we hit those times and, and receive the money and, and get these upgrades in.
I do have a quick question, Mr. Chair. On the, on the MVET district or building, are we in control of that? I mean, it is our building, but I know there's a board of superintendents and John or somebody also served on a board. You do? Okay. So that board will actually determine or work with the administration, determine how it's spent?
So we had to make, the grant applica, the grant required us to make general?
Area recommendations.
Recommendations for where the dollars would go. And so we'll have to stay within those areas. But I would certainly see the MVET board as seeing those specific plans as they move forward and having input as to timeline and if there's any implementation items they'd like to see revised.
Okay, thank you.
But similar people, you know, it is our building, so Mr. Bachman will be responsible for managing that project and the components of how it's addressed and those sorts of things. So we have, we do have control over who's in, out, and what they're doing. Good. Anyone else? Okay, we're down to reports already, steaming right through our, our program tonight. The principals first.
My group is gaining money. Well, everything's going quite well in early childhood. Kids are coming bundled up like little snowmen and women or girls, boys and girls and it's that time of the year, so we're excited for that. On October 4th, we had our first early childhood screening of the year. We had about 48 kids come through and go through that screening. And just as a reminder, that screening is something that's required prior to kindergarten entrance. And so we hold that about three times a year. We'll hold our next screening in January and then we'll have one in the spring of the year in April. So that went quite well. Exciting little program today. Our ECFE and Schoen and Inez teachers were able to participate in a Jeffers Foundation presentation in the Community Center. The theme of the, the program was team teaching with mother nature. So the, the two experts that were here talked a lot about incorporating nature into the classroom and the nature of the classroom as well as taking the kids outdoors and making their outdoors the classroom as well. So that was a great way to spend a chilling one day more. Really good information, so we're excited for that.
Wonderful. Greetings from North Elementary, everyone. Told you at our last meeting that we had PTO activity all scheduled for October and that was kind of during the rainy cold season. So that got shut down, but they're coming right back with a movie night coming up in November to make up for that. It's just kind of losing daylight hours at the end of the day. The, the whole point of that was to, to get some families on campus, get some yard games going, get families to know each other and they're going to shift to a movie for that. Movies undecided, they'll be inside. Also, we want to acknowledge Children Weekend Family Program. We have a snack program at North and at South. Recently at one of the committee board meetings, they, they, they moved to donate $1,500 to their group in order to basically to fund any families that are having difficulty paying for snack each quarter. So we definitely want to thank them for those dollars. There are a good number of families that that will help out a lot and we definitely want to offer snack to all the students at the 9:30, 10 o'clock hour every morning. That makes a big difference in learning, so we thank them for that. Also, we had our assembly in October. It's always a great, great event. 500 plus another 100 staff members in the gym. 500 plus another 100 staff members in the gym, setting the focus for the month. The month is thinking above the line. So, we're teaching in the classroom the kids to recognize when their thought process is being positive, you know, and that's where we want to keep our mindset. And it's okay to visit under the line once in a while, so we kind of get negative and feel negative about things, but we talk about just visiting there. Don't stay down there. Come back up above the line. So, that's what they're talking about in classes. Early release coming up on Wednesday, our buddy classrooms always get together. Every homeroom has a buddy class, try to go, you know, different grade levels so that the students have a natural kind of mentor student, and so they get together for activities on the early release. And we're really excited to have the second annual North Clothes Closet coming up in November again. That's November 3rd from 9 to 12. If you remember, last year, a student named Quinn Rasbach, who actually got the, that student spotlight thing going. She, I took a meeting with her and her mom last week, and Mrs. Steele. They've expanded a little bit. They want collections at every site, and then they're going to have all the clothes on display, and it's free. You know, families just show up, take what fits and, and leave, because these are all items that would just get donated. They're expanding efforts too, to provide some transportation. There was a donation from the Qantas, I believe, some money, and they want, she wants to use it for, to provide transportation from houses to North on that Saturday, which I think is pretty cool.
We also have our student of the month with us tonight, Sophie. She was our first student of the month at the school. I know that you've already met her at the, at tonight and at the previous board meeting. She's the daughter of Ed and Melissa Lee. And if you, if you have read the news release on Mr. First student of the month, Sophie, what a well-rounded young woman Sophie is. She's a, everything from a soccer captain to a state, a state attendee at the speech com, speech contest last spring. Was it two years in a row or just last year?
I don't think it was in a row. Well, nope, you have 10th, 11th, yeah.
She is considering studying biology. And unofficially, I always ask every, I love those interviews, but unofficially, I always ask them if they have any regrets from, you know, something that they didn't try while they were in high school. And I think that Sophie has tried everything since. She's in play, she's in speech, she's in, you've done up trial, I believe.
I haven't. I was thinking about doing it this year.
And any, to like any number of sports. And typically, the response is the kids, kids regret not having tried participating in theater. Sophie's one was, should we play hockey? So, is not Jennifer that?
Yeah. Never know.
So, thanks for me.
Yeah.
If you guys have any questions, go for it. I'll tell you right off. All right. We have received our ACT results for the graduating class of 2018. Those are embargoed until Wednesday morning, so, so stay tuned for those results. One thing that I'm looking forward to during the month of October, I have been invited by our FFA chapter to attend their national convention. So, then, the, the state alumni board of the FFA, I'd always, they often like to get as many administrators to that convention as they can, just to show off what, what they're doing. And our chapter is, of course, receiving an award. So, I'll be, I'll be flying out to Indianapolis early morning on October 25th, watching, they'll show me around the convention, watch them receive their award, and fly, fly back home that night. So, I really want to thank Gina Leland and Mike Reiser for inviting me along to that convention. It's, it's apparently the, the largest national convention event, not just school conventions, and it has to be hosted in Indianapolis every year because that's the largest convention center. And I guess it's just a sea of gold, so I'm excited about that. And prior to the next board meeting, the weekend before, will be our second musical at the New St. Peter High School. West Side Story will be premiering Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and we add a Sunday matinee because the, the show last year was so incredibly popular. So, we hope to see, we hope to see everybody there.
Are you going to have the, the ticket sales?
Yes.
Can you talk about that just a minute?
I will. We will be having a, we have purchased an online ticketing system, so that, we'll be advertising that as it gets closer to the date. So, you can reserve, reserve specific seats. In, in an effort to avoid the long lines that we had, that were great, it was a great problem to have, but people will be able to reserve their seats for the evening or matinee of their choice ahead of time.
If you have an opportunity to take lunch right across the street from the convention center, is this little place called St. Elmo's?
Yes. So, good. You want to?
Shrimp cocktail.
Yes.
Have the shrimp cocktail for lunch.
Okay. Thank you.
And your head will be clearer until the next day.
Good hoarder.
Thank you. Dr. Peterson?
Yes, just two items.
Your turn.
Yes. Two, two items in terms of a report from me tonight, the first of which is included in the packet tonight, is a, an overview of October enrollments as of last Monday. So, that would be Monday, the October 8th. And so, typically, what we do is we like to give our board and the community a sense as to how many students do we have within our school district. The traditional K-12 enrollment is, is listed for you on the, on the left side. And then, some other maybe not so well-known components of our school district population is on the right. Our early, our ECSE, Kate Reddy, programs center out at Davis Street with MVET and MBS and Rockben, Hoffman Learning Center, and then our YAP program, our Young Adult and Adolescent Program at the Minnesota Security Hospital. So, you'll see the total in district of 2,284. That is very, very close to what that number looked like last October, just simply because as Becky and I are putting these things together, we're looking at, oh, what was in the board packet last year? And what does it look like now? And if you look at that kindergarten number, with that number being a little lower than what, than what we were anticipating, to be that close to last year's enrollment means that we're making that up in a lot of those other areas. And we're especially seeing it in ET's programs at the preschool center as well. So, second item I wanted to report on is that it is that time of year, and I know that Becky was talking with some members before tonight's meeting, but the MSBA Winter Leadership Conference materials are out. We don't have specifics on breakout sessions and keynotes, but we do know when the conference is. And I know that Becky has been talking with folks about accommodations, and so if you have any special requests or things that we need to know, please let us know. We know that we have plenty of time, but I think that's one of the nice parts is that we're on it early, so we can get that addressed and not feel as if we're rushing to the conference in the middle of January as we're walking across Nickland Mall in the cold.
Did you want to speak, Tracy, about this issue?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just come to the microphone, introduce yourself.
I'll be nervous.
All right.
Either one.
All right. So, I'm here tonight to talk to you about special education, my favorite thing, just to give you a...
What, we're going to talk about student enrollment?
Um, yep, and that's what it is about.
And your name? You've got to tell everybody who you are.
Yep. That's what I was just going to say.
Okay.
Okay. My name's Tracy Stewie. I live at 1719 North District in St. Peter. I have three kids in the school district and one graduate. Currently serving on the statewide special ed advisory panel. Members are appointed by the governor's office through the commissioner of education. And we need four to five times per year to make recommendations on special education issues. Sitting at these meetings and reviewing data has inspired me to take a closer look at St. Peter Public Schools data. I wanted to share with you tonight regarding the number of students attending St. Peter Public Schools that are on IEPs. As a reminder, for those that don't know, IEPs are individualized education plans that are developed for students who receive special education services. It's important for us to look at this information, is it not only affects those kids that are on IEPs, but it affects the entire classroom. If you see on the first page of your data, you'll see the top graph indicates the numbers in grades K through 12, as depicted. With a column added showing the number of students at each of those grade levels that are on IEPs. And this information was received from MVET on October 12th, 2018, by Melissa Wagner. I took the privilege also of calculating the percentage of kids on IEP by grade level. On that same page, you'll see a second table at the bottom, and this represents numbers received late January, early February. The student population numbers were received by calling the district office, and again, the number of kids on IEPs were received by calling MVET. It's beginning to them. As you can imagine, the number of students on IEPs does constantly change, and I realize that. New kids are being identified, students graduate out of the system, students move in and out of the district. But I wonder if I had the numbers going back even further, what they might look like. I only have these two. Looking at just this, it appears to me as if our student needs are increasing, and my question would be, is our staff increasing with those needs? I also want to take this time to say that I know not every child on IEP needs a parent professional. I have three kids on IEPs, each for different reasons, and each requiring a different level of support. But what I can tell you is that even if they don't require a parent professional, they still have needs that need to be addressed that are above and beyond what would be typical. Otherwise, they wouldn't be on an IEP. Moving on to the next page, you will see a graph that shows the number of kids in each grade level and how that correlates to the total number of kids at each grade level. The page after that, you'll show a lot of graphs. I will show the number of kids on IEPs for each building. Please note in particular, I thought the middle school was interesting. I'm not trying to pick on them because I really like Mr. Graph and I like all the staff there. But I will say that my experience is that IEP meetings are hard to schedule, and you can see that they have 33 more kids on IEPs than they did just in January. Once scheduled, you have to wait a few weeks. It takes longer than it should, over two weeks, to get updated IEP information after an IEP meeting. As in special education, there's very strict deadlines on a lot of things. There's specific deadlines, and there's what they call flexible deadlines, which are my personal favorites. One of the flexible deadlines is after having an IEP meeting, there's, to get the revised IEP out to you in a reasonable amount of time. It was interesting that I was still waiting on an IEP from a meeting that I had called first week of school. We met two weeks later, was still waiting for the IEP, which, you know, I got it in the mail today, but there you go. This isn't anybody's fault necessarily, but if we have a case facilitator that now has 33 additional kids on her preschool, might wonder what that's about. When your child, when your child is in crisis and it takes six weeks for an updated IEP to get written, that is a time, that is a long time, too long. Going one more page, this represents the percentage of change by grade level from January through October. You will see that almost each grade level is showing increases in students on IEPs, with the only exception being grade 10. Again, it is important to stress, these are just two very specific glimpses and times, but I think it is something that the administration and this board should be watching. The last page is a quick glimpse showing the total number of student increase from January through October broken out by building level. That's where I got the 33 for middle school. So, what am I asking for the school board to do with this data? I'm asking for you to do the same with this data as you would do with any other data. Look at it, analyze it, and use it when making decisions moving forward. But to end with one statistic, as of October 12th, 2018, St. Peter Public Schools has 17.51% of students schoolwide that have IEPs. I don't know what the official statewide average is, 'cause I have a hard time honing that down, but I've always heard it was between 14 and 15%. The St. Peter Schools right now is at 17.5, and it seems the number is going up, and I'm just going to leave it at that. And that's all I wanted to say. Wasn't bad. I told you.
I got a quick question.
Yes.
Going back to your St. Peter Public Schools students on IEPs percentage comparison?
Yes.
I may be wrong, but aren't we, let's take an example. 12th grade, it's January 2018, October 2018, aren't those two separate classes?
Yes, they would be. You are correct. So, so if you want, I mean, I could, I had another graph to show it the other way, but, I mean, I could have brought that too. So, if you want to, you could look then, Mr. Meeks, if you wanted to look, if you wanted to compare it that way, you would look at grade 11 in the blue and compare it to grade 12 in the red. Still an increase. So, you could compare K, K to blue and 1 to red, that's the same group of kids, still an increase.
Mostly the same group of kids. There could be some different ones in there.
Well, what he's saying is that the kindergartners in January, the blue line in January...
Well, I know exactly what he's saying.
Okay. Yeah. It's just a different way. I mean, it's kind of like when you guys look at MCA data, you can look at it both ways. That's, I mean, I could have printed out a, I could easily get that to you if you'd like. I mean, the numbers, the straight numbers don't lie. To be very honest, when I asked for the IEP numbers, I was thinking, oh, I bet they're not going to be as high, because my thinking, and maybe I'm wrong, is that as school gets going, more kids would be identified, right? You know, you kind of get to that midterm, you get to period one, or the end of quarter one, and you're like, you know, is there something more going on with this child? And you might do an evaluation. Takes forever in a day, because that's just how it works. I thought the numbers would be lower than they are, but I don't know. I just don't know if anybody ever looks at this, because I never really hear special education talked about at the board meetings, and so...
We've talked about it a fair amount, actually, but...
I guess I just haven't seen it.
I think that your, your 17.5% number is probably down from where we have been in the past, because St. Peter is traditionally 4% to 5% over the state average, which runs 13% to 14%. And the numbers that we get, only usually annually they show up, and we're always 4%, 5% higher than that. And we've attributed that to the fact that we have such a great special education program in the city of St. Peter, that we often get a little migration here. And that's what we've looked at for probably the last decade or more, as why we think our numbers are higher, is that people recognize our group is doing a really good job, so they tend to bring their children here if they do need extra supports. So, I, I think that's how we, we have viewed it in the past.
I guess I don't know how you think that the numbers are off. I mean...
I didn't say they're off. I said, I thought that...
Oh, what did you say then? Repeat what your first sentence was, that I misunderstood.
I said that your 17% seems to me that it might be down just a little.
Oh.
From what our...
Down, meaning from a different glimpse in time other than in January?
Right.
Okay. And that's the thing, it's just that snapshot, it's just what it is on that date.
And most of the time, we only see these numbers annualized one time. And it's not one group compared to another group. We don't like to do that very much, because it does create a number of complexities that you don't need to have usually, but in other data sets for sure. So, you know, I'd say that your, your numbers are accurately reflective of what we would expect to see as far as total kids in IEPs, from the board's perspective, from what I've seen over the last 15 years.
I mean, it's just, there's 74 more kids from January till now. And I'm only speaking from, from a parent perspective. I don't, I can't speak from, I can tell you that I know our staff does a great job, and they're always going to meet the needs of IEP, I know that. From a parent perspective, though, there are things that I'm kind of a loud mouth, so my kids tend to get their needs met, but it takes some work. So, thank you very much.
Reports, we're still in reports. We finished up the winter conference information. Board members, have we got anything around the table? Mr. Dixon?
Nope. Thank you.
John?
No. No.
I do. All right. I want to give a big shout out to the fifth grade girls on their championship win in volleyball this weekend. They played, they did a fantastic job. It was, they were supposed to play two out of three. They went two games through the whole thing, 10 games, took the championship. Congratulations to Natalie, Michaela, and Kylie for coaching. They did great. I think there was seven or eight different schools, and they just pounded them all out. They had a good job. They had a good job. Yep, they did.
I did forget one thing.
Yeah.
Drew and Vicky, can you stick around after? We've got to find another date for the Finance Committee meeting.
Yes.
We're getting ready for the levy certification.
There is one other thing that, that MVET was mentioned, and Dr., I've, I've been serving on that for the last year. And MVET is expecting some change in funding sources in the, in the next year. And we've been notified by surrounding counties that they're no longer going to, or their intent at this moment is to no longer provide some funding for mental health services that are being provided through MVET to the various cooperative districts. And we've started dialogue with, Dr. Peterson and the superintendents have met with various county representatives a couple of times. county representatives a couple of times. We're reaching out to other members in those counties to talk about the differential of the services that are provided at M-Ved versus somewhere else. But they, you know, as things stand, right now, we're kind of looking at, they're saying today that they would serve us notice on our agreement in January, and the funding would dry up by the end of the fiscal year. And it's a significant sum, and if that is going to be maintained, it would fall back then upon the cooperative districts to support those things. So just a heads up, that we're probably going to hear more about that in the next 60 days, that there is some ongoing dialogue, and that the M-Ved board may be sending back to this board some suggestions and ideas and things to dialogue about.
And Mr. Chair, I think that's a very, very well-said summary. We remain hopeful at the superintendent level with M-Ved that we will be engaging with those county partners to talk about the critical aspect of mental health funding and mental health services for adolescents, especially in today's age. And so that dialogue is continuing, and like I said, we're hopeful we will continue that and get a positive resolution to that topic that came to us late summer.
But wanted to give you guys a heads up, because it'd be going through committees. Upcoming meetings, we have a policy committee meeting slated for Tuesday, November 6th. In the district office, we have instructional program committee Tuesday, November 13th. Negotiations is slated for Friday, November 16th, and our regular board meeting is Monday, November 18th. And there are others to be discussed at the time. Which brings us to our favorite agenda item.
I move to adjourn.
Second. In favor?
Hi.
They are adjourned. Thank you.
Get your calendars out. Do it so I can get home and watch the Packers.